Right, good evening everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting on Monday the 2nd of December 2024. There is no plan for our long this evening. In case of emergency, please access exit via the doors behind me or the way in which you came. Next, we have apologies for absence. We have councillor Jay Taylor, E Tyla and anyone else?
Yeah, A Reynolds.
Thank you.
And.
Oh, and G Dalton.
Oh, and Catherine, yes, Catherine Dalton, yeah.
Next, we have declarations of interest. Does anyone have any interest on any of the items below? Councillor Fraser?
Seventy.
Thank you. Next, we have item four, which is a report by Megan Free. Megan, are you ready?
Ready.
Thank you. Over to you.
Hello everyone. Hello. So alongside the economic programmes manager, we have developed a small scale scheme for the delivery of footfall counters across Brecon's market towns. So specifically for Atterborough, this will involve the installation of two footfall footprints, which are supposed to be installed firstly along Exchange Street and the second one along Church Street as well. So as a district wide scheme, it tends historically distributed to various contractors, with PFM intelligently being awarded the contract. And they also completed a comparable project in Swartham recently as well. So this project will deliver around quantifiable data that will be shared between both Brecon District Council and also Constrator Town Council. And it will enable both organisations to identify and measure events success, identify peak activity periods, also encourage data-driven community making, and it will also support future funding applications. So often, funders such as Historic England and also the National Lottery require such data, meaning that the delivery of the scheme should enhance the overall quality of any future funding applications. So as you can see on the map over there, this indicates both the proposed locations themselves, but also the area that the counters will be monitoring as well. So if you take the first footfall counter, this is supposed to be situated near King's Square, which is of course where the town council poses the majority of its activities and events throughout the year. Whereas the second counter is situated along Church Street, which is adjacent to St Mary's Church. And this is to ensure that any activities and events or any projects that are delivered, you can then measure the impact that those have on the high streets, as well as with community groups and churches. So in terms of the technology that's required to monitor footfall, it will require the installation of two CCTV cameras, mountain brackets, a 4G router, as well as a classified unit. And that's to ensure that both parties receive real time information from those counters. And that will be filtered through to PFM's Advantage software, as well as Microsoft's Power BI. So the Advantage platform can actually be downloaded from your phone. So all of the analytics that it provides will be readily accessible for you. I will just note that all of the data that is collected by the counters will be compliant with GDPR regulations. So this means that any vehicles or bicycles or individuals that pass through that measuring area, they won't be personally identifiable. So it means that, yes, whilst the counters themselves will of course be accurate in the data that they're obtaining, we also ensure that there's anonymity for those passing through, such as residents and tourists. In terms of the costs and maintenance of the scheme, the scheme itself, it'll cost around seven and a half thousand pounds for the installation of both cameras. And that will be funded through the rural urban prosperity funding, which Brecon will oversee. And Brecon will also oversee the project management and delivery of the scheme itself. So the request to town councillors this evening is whether the council would be willing to take on the operational and maintenance costs of both of these cameras. So the annual expenses are estimated at 780 pounds, and that's for both cameras. So we have a three year contract in place with PFM, which if councillors do decide to progress this scheme, could potentially be extended if councillors want to help with that. So on that, I have two questions for councillors. And the first one is, are you more satisfied with the scheme itself, but also the scope of it? And secondly, would the town council be willing to take on the operational and maintenance costs I've outlined in this presentation?
Does anyone have any questions? I'll go first, Taylor.
I just think it could be useful bringing new businesses in because when people set up, they do ask for the footfall, you know, how big is the footfall? And, you know, at least we would have some proper updating data to feed back, which could encourage more businesses in the centre.
Councillor Taylor?
I was actually, I like the science here. I know you already have a QR code to fill in the history of the town, but did we have?
Different thing.
I don't, excuse me, there was a QR code.
That's not what we're talking about.
I know. You, I said I have a question, it's not on that, it's another question.
I thought you'd moved on to the wayfinding.
All right, well, go on, yeah, maybe you have, go on.
Councillor Bencard?
Broadly in agreement, but in terms of the footfall numbers, like the KPIs, keep all the indicators, can you give us some for the councillors, sorry, some flavour of the numbers that you'll be tracking? Are there any targets against that?
I don't think there would be any targets, but I think it would be useful, especially for any projects that are being built forward in a particular event, you could certainly set up KPIs and objectives for those particular events. I think that would be particularly useful, especially because you'll have the data then to compare it to when it's just usually operational.
Thanks Megan, so it's like broad numbers, but if we had specific events, we could then put targets against that footfall.
I think that would make sense, especially when you're looking at funding applications in order for this to happen.
Thank you.
Councillor Thwaites?
Suppose in a similar vein, I'm just completing one in Swartham. What were the expectations and what was the outcome from that? Did it exceed expectations, was it, or was the general feedback on that?
I can certainly answer for that.
It'd be interesting to see what the results were like.
Councillor Ashby?
Yeah, well, can the police log into the CCTV?
No, so that's something I did query. Because we've anonymised it, I don't think it would be appropriate to share that with the police because we are trying to platform those GDPR regulations, but I can certainly double check that.
So what would GDPR should be then, if they wanted to access that footage?
I'm not sure of the regulations themselves, that's just one.
I'm just trying to think what the difference is between that CCTV camera that's been posed and one, is that, for example, in the car parks or.
I think my understanding was if, for example, you say you have someone speeding through the town, and there are certain regulations where it has to be clear that it's a speed camera. So for this instance, because we would be using it in order to footfall, it's not being installed for a particular purpose.
Just in more in a state.
Oh, that's something I can.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Thwaites?
Again, on what President said. Do we have to advise people that there are cameras being put up and they are being recorded, even though we might fall in GDPR, that we have to inform the community?
I'll check that.
Please.
Presume we just have a little bit of signage where the cameras were situated.
I don't know, but obviously Megan touched on the GDPR, a bit of a tricky bit.
Better be something, sorry. Yeah. I mean, as well, we might be able to check that against what happened in Swartham.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Bensby?
It's one of the time period, is it 4/7 or?
Yes.
Yeah.
In years.
Yes, so that can be examined.
Done.
The numbers have any further questions? Okay, so can I just have like an indicative show of hands to each of Megan's questions? Megan, can you just fire them back at us?
Yeah. So the first question was, are you more satisfied with the scheme itself and the scope of the scheme?
Okay, now we'll share hands for yes. I think that's unanimous. And the second question?
And the second question was, would the town council be willing to take on the operational and maintenance costs?
What is the answer to the second question?
Actually, what's on the board?
Is there a plan B?
What are we expecting maintenance of it?
So we expect to provide 700 pounds.
Maintenance of what, if it's a town? What are we maintaining?
Probably an annual maintenance check with PFM, is it?
Yes, so like a service, almost.
Okay.
Unless there's something to be.
You don't know the answer.
We don't know the answer to that one.
Good.
Do we not know the answer?
Sorry.
Your second question.
If, yeah, and that was.
If we're not willing to.
If you're not able to find a revenue cost, then, sorry, I'm just, I work for Brecon District Council. So basically, we've been able to scale some capital funding to make this happen. The district has no revenue to support the implementation of this. So we've effectively gone to all the town councillors and said, if we can find the capital, can you find the revenue to make this work? So we think it's a good idea, but at this point, we wouldn't be able to, yeah, trace the details more than we can.
I agree, I think we should, but it would be reminiscent if we didn't ask that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, Brian.
Okay. Councillor Thwaites? I was going to say, the contract's only for another three years and it's only 780 quid. If at the end of the three years, we decide that it's not typical lap boxes or something that we want to carry on with, at least it is only three years.
That is very true, definitely, well made. Can I then ask members for a show of hands if we are in favour of accepting the cost that's expected to be just shy of 800 pounds, and then my best share of hands for yes? I think that is also unanimous, yeah, thank you. Back to you.
So in relation to wayfinding and updated design plan is being distributed to councillors for your new consideration. And that essentially outlines the designs for each of the proposed wayfinding signage that will be included as part of the scheme. So I will note that there are some final minor amendments that we need to know that are currently outstanding. So this includes EV icons to be added to the maps, QR codes for the maps and the lectums, and also updated text for the car parking and public transport sections, which you can find at the bottom of the maps. That information has been cleared by the design team, so it's currently still good then. Specifically, there also needs amendments to the scheme's scope. So as you can see on the map on Spain, sign three, which is a traffic sign, has been removed from the scope. So if and when car parking charges are implemented into Brecon, this sign will be incorporated as a part of that scheme. And also, there's been the addition of sign nineteen, which is a map that is situated on platform two at Atterborough Railway Station. So this is to ensure that any residents or tourists that are leaving that station, that side of the station, are able to understand where to go within town and also gets available there as well. And we'll just note, with the addition of sign nineteen, I'm conscious that this is an addition to the town council's agreement of the number of assets that you would take on for the wayfinding signage, as this is on Greater Andria's land, so it will increase from six signs to seven signs. So can I ask firstly, are councillors more satisfied with the proposed amendments, the designs themselves, and also are you happy to take on the additional? That's indicated on the screen.
Do members have any questions or comments first? Councillor Thwaites?
Just a very quick one, the layout for the train station?
Yes.
Is it possible to have number thirteen a bit closer to the point of footfall exit from the train station, where the square thing is, because at the moment, that sort of, yeah. Could you combine with the lector, have two together?
Potentially, that's something I'm concerned about.
Of course, we've got a map on one platform, but where people talk faster.
So we did have a site visit with Greater Andria to look, this is a photo location along Hinn End. Because of the railings that require to make it accessible, it'll be really challenging to have a letter or a map included along either side of the railings essentially. So you had to sort of incorporate them, but I do take the wing, particularly about providing them.
Of course, that would be useful.
Is that just at the train station?
So you want the job done to me so far, we'll go to be honest.
Councillor Stane?
And I'm going back to QR codes because I had talked to the councillors. And last week, councillor E Tyla and myself met with your own party to discuss our mindful towns and other stuff, projects that we wanted to start in the community. And obviously, we were talking about, we're really lucky, Alborism and Mindful Town. So many people from our community have come to Brecon to train in free courses, the Brecon one, and have made us a mindful town. And we were discussing maybe a QR code on the, that could, I like our mindful town. So if you scan that code, it could signpost you to information about our mindful town schemes. Because obviously, although I took ones on my courses, I volunteered to put one on mine, there isn't much within the town that promotes that we are, that people have done ever written training, our mental health training, from all sectors of the community. So I just wonder if you could team up with Lorraine, you know, just before the design team finalises this, put a little QR code on for our mindful town scheme?
Yeah, so I'll see the design team and I'll see as well if they have almost an excerpt, a paragraph on there about the mindful town and then have a QR code, just so it's clear what exactly that sign does. But yeah.
Councillor Thwaites?
Just to rest on detail, actually, the map for the stage is quite old, as those shows exist in building, not new layout. So that could do with that data from the miners, where we've got at the moment thirteen potential.
Any further questions for members? If not, I'll refer back to Megan's questions, which again, I'll have to ask her to repeat. We'll take them one at a time, Megan, if that's okay.
No. So my questions were, are you satisfied with the amendments that are made to the scheme?
Can I please have a show of hands for yes? That's unanimous.
Are you satisfied with the designs themselves as well?
Show of hands please. That's unanimous.
And just to be clear, are you happy for the town council to take on responsibility for the additional map?
Show of hands please. That's unanimous, thank you very much, Megan. I think there's one more, isn't there?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So in relation to youth club, as councillors, we are there, Brecon has agreed to fund the youth run for a three year period. And the first year will be funded through UK Share for Prosperity Funding, so that's been filtered down from central governments as a part of what we're managing. Whereas the second and third year pots will be funded through the Market Towns Initiative, which the district councillors have allocated. So consequently, there are two award letters for councillors to review this evening. So firstly, could councillors confirm that they are happy to accept the funding that's outlined in these award agreements? And secondly, as these are in a draft format, would councillors be able to delegate authority to the park in consultation with the mayor or another representative to finalise any outstanding matters related to the grant letters? This is just to streamline the process to ensure that any final amendments are made in preparation and prior to the youth club's opening.
We don't, must be managed.
It is. Yeah. Well, then should we just move to a vote? Can I have a show of hands, please, fall in favour? Thank you, and a vote to make the delegations to either Sharon or myself and Sharon? Which, which would you vote?
Both.
Both, okay. Oh, which, should we have a, we didn't have a proposal secondary, did we?
Oh, propose it.
Okay. Seconded by councillor Wincard and show of hands, unanimous, perfect, thank you. That was a little bit sloppy, wasn't it?
Sorry, that's my question.
No, 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 it was me. Um, yeah, I know, sounds slipping, getting complacent. Megan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Megan.
Yeah, I think it speaks volumes that we were, you know, unanimous on those, so. Next, we have item five, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? Ms Forham?
We all remember the flood of November 3, on the, I'm not sure. Is the councillor aware of people having problems with reinsurance? My insurance, I love that model, because they have, we mentioned the water throughout the whole house. And, I mean, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't major companies had a respite this long. Is it, have they had any comments or what have they made?
Yeah, so I am aware that a number of residents have faced similar difficulties. What I would say is, there has recently been the formation of a Atterborough Festival flood group. And that group, who we can supply contact email for, have been quite supportive to a number of residents now that have come up against insurers and have been given advice to help and support residents in getting reinsured. So we can pass on the email to you, but I would say as a first bullet call, definitely ask them because they have been in similar situations some multiple times now and are quite familiar with the process.
You know, what's the situation, what should be taken by the council? And will they live in writing, a note to the council, well, and winning the paper? Is there any, any writing after the purchase?
Flooding notes? Yeah, so there is on the town council's website. There'll be notes from three public forums that have all been held to discuss the flooding issues after flood from Stombabett. I think they were maybe the 30th of October, 5th of December 2023. And we had one not so long ago, but I can't remember what the date was. I think it was in August time at the academy, 29th of August, I think it was. And those are all available on town council's website. If not, I'd recommend speaking to, send an email to Steve Hawes at Norfolk County Council, who's senior flood risk officer there, and has been heavily involved. Steve Hawes. Yeah, I can provide his email as well.
If I, if I may, have you looked at the flood re scheme? Flood R, flood re, that's designed to help helping communities to deal with flooding issues? Or set up by the government, I don't know if it's still live, but it's suddenly more investigated, if you have any problems with that. Yes, we've really flood risk, literally, that's what it's intended for.
Sorry, we're just getting a bit of feedback up here. I don't, I don't know if it's the weather or if it feels obvious.
Yeah.
So.
Stay real with us. Thank you, councillor Fraser. Sorry, Mr Forham, are you satisfied with those answers? So if we get you some contact emails and you can have a look at what councillor Thwaites has just amended.
Have a look.
Yeah, thank you. Any further queries? Yes, sir.
Well, it's been over two years since I first contacted the council about speeding along Broke. Which is ridiculous. Over a year later, and I had to contact the council again to see what was being done. But apparently all the permissions were different because the permissions were already there. And so was the signpost to put the cameras on to.
Yeah.
That was saying, everything was, yes, we'll do it. It's all going through. I then contacted it in August and said, it was not going to be, I mean, and said, yes, something will be done. That was August. Can you please tell me the date when something will be done?
I have actually given the brackets to our grounds team, so they're with them at the moment, and they will get them up, and I will get them to put them up by the end of the week. Our head groundsman is off today, so.
Can I please ask another question? Unfinished business, why isn't it taken up in the next season? The following makes, this is an example.
Don't cry, I understand the question.
I think, I think I understand the question. So I think the question is, like, basically matters arising or addressing outstanding actions.
Yes.
Oh, I think in, in respect of matters arising from the previous meeting, we could do that, but longstanding, we have so many projects and actions that are made that some obviously take some time to progress. So I think if we had them returned to every meeting, we, I personally feel we would end up being here all night because there's so many things that we're.
Just in real research, basically, we'd say, yes, something's being done during the next meeting. Yes, something's being done. At least it would be on the agenda. What's happening with this case is we think of it, you know, many, many times.
Councillor Stane?
I just want clarification, and the gentleman says there's posts and missions for cameras. I don't think we're being stupid, I think their signs too, so they're flashed.
Yeah, so.
They won't, yeah, they won't record drivers, let them know that they're speeding.
They don't let the drivers know, yeah.
They, they flash, don't they, when you're going over that?
They should.
Yes, they let the driver know they're speeding.
But they collate them.
They, they collate the data though, but obviously, no one is taking it to task. Yeah, that's right.
And the second thing is, I think what councillor Taylor was trying to say, we've probably got about 50 projects. At the moment, they're ongoing with the footpath, the driveway, the car park, the car park, the wayfinding. For them to come back on every agenda, we'd never get any new business done because it was just literally, our agenda would probably end up about three pages long. I understand the frustration completely, but.
It just.
Everything to come back to every meeting would just make it, yeah, an overload. Like, I, I feel, but I do understand the frustration when it is just something that might seem to have a really quick turnaround that's dragged out.
Another point, if I may add, is that I understand we start for a month and then the, then it moves on to another area.
Yeah.
How, is it possible to make it permanent?
No.
Why is?
But it can return to the same location, can't it, after a period of time?
Yeah, it can, it can move away and then it can come back after that month. So it just can't remain there permanently.
How come Great Elling's got cameras and speed awareness?
They, if they're permanent, I'm not sure, yeah, if it's a different scheme.
Well, can we look at that scheme then, so?
Well, I'd have to look at what Great Elling has.
It's not, it's not done through their parish council, it's done through their community speed watch. But I'm sure we can get contact information.
Yeah, it could be that they aren't supposed to be permanent because I'm not aware of any permanent speed cameras. The only ones that are permanent are the yellow ones and the ones that are enforced by the police.
If I can make a suggestion.
And they do record people's registrations, they're the only ones that I'm aware that are permanent.
If I can just make a suggestion, so as Sharon's advised, she will instruct the ground staff to get it installed in place before the end of the week. We do quarterly have safer day production panel meetings with the police and other, the singing villages, send representation to those as well. So perhaps at that next meeting, we can actually have an open and frank discussion with our neighbouring towns and villages about what's been effective, how do they overcome such obstacles and try and get a. And try and get a a more fitting long-term solution in place, rather than having to alternate the cameras. Councillor Westby.
There is a, um, question sign on my agenda.
Permanent.
I think it's because those sands were ones we got with match funding. But the criteria was that because they were coming with match funding, they really had to use them in the most areas in the town possible. I think it is just a different scheme and maybe a different pot of money that the fixed ones come from. It was just ours, the ones that you're on about, Sharon, they specifically come from a pot of money that was that terms were that they were to move about.
Yeah, they definitely should be being moved around, whatever they are, wherever they are in town. So it could be that, because it could be, I don't know the history of it, it could be the speed watch team that was were the ones that moved it around, but because obviously they've. That's it. Okay, yeah, so our grounds team, yeah, okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, Leslie.
Um, first I'd like to say congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
No, you didn't succeed, but I think really it's put our town background, Redland, on the map when you were coming up against the big boys like the borough cities. Watching us raise the table, well done. Um, but also I'd like to say, well done, I laughed windows without all the posters in front of the building. Is that going to be permanent?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further comments? No, thank you very much. We'll move on then. Next on the agenda this evening, we have item six, which is the town council meeting held on the fourth of November, twenty twenty four. Uh, can I please have a proposal on seconded or any amendments, please? Uh, councillor Dale, seconded by councillor Taylor and the sheriff hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, next we have the minutes of the extraordinary meeting on the twenty ninth of October, twenty twenty four. Uh, councillor Bertrand, seconded by councillor Waits and sheriff hands, please. Thank you very much, which is actually unanimous. And then lastly, we have the extraordinary meeting on the eleventh of November, twenty twenty four. Uh, councillor Bertrand, seconded by councillor D'Souza and sheriff hands, please. Carried.
Yeah.
Uh, next we have financial matters, item seven, to authorised payments. Maybe councillor Fraser seconded. Does anyone have any comments? Um, can I have a proposal on second of the acceptance then, please? Got councillor S Taylor, uh, seconded by councillor Dale and sheriff hands. That's unanimous. Yeah, please, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, next we have item seven B to agree the direct debit. Can I have a proposal on second please? I've got councillor D'Souza, seconded by councillor Wingfield and sheriff hands. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Item seven C to receive income for acceptance and approval. I've got councillor Wenham, seconded by councillor Taylor and a show of hands, please. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, petty cash is for information. Do we have any comments? None. Uh, income and expenditure is also for information. Do we have any comments?
Could I just have a comment on the announcement, just to be humble? On the income, I noticed we have the tamble bar card payments. Where does the tamble bar cash payments register at? That's what we need to know when we read this, the payment to the bank. No, I was just thinking.
Yeah, that's I've seen the same at the moment.
Quite a lot of money to go on.
I need to go tomorrow, I just want to pay cash.
That's okay. But that's used to my good, good investment, so far.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, I'd choose and save a bunch of cash, it's always going to go over there, aren't I? I hope.
Who do you suggest?
Do you need to muscle out or?
He's not a dog.
Well, he won't be a lot of help. He'll roll over and say, take it. Sha- Sharon's volunteered to go with the mission, she hasn't looked at me. Thank you. Um, next we have, uh, seven X.
Yep.
Which is to ratify the completion payment for St Edmund's Place. Uh, land purchase of fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety seven pounds. Uh, can I please have a proposal on second please? Councillor Ashby, seconded by councillor Wenham and a show of hands. Oh.
We've got, it's a line.
Oh, cool. That was unanimous.
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, next we have item seven G, uh, to ratify, ratify the payment of three thousand five hundred and ninety seven pound deposit for the outdoor cinema for acceptance and approval. Uh, I've got councillor S Taylor, seconded by councillor Fraser and sheriff hands, please. That is unanimous, thank you very much. Next we have seven H to consider quotes for coin slash card operated devices for the public toilets for acceptance and approval. Does anyone have any comments? Any comments? Shall I wait for Sharon to come back in? She'll only be a second. I think this is, um, to make arrangements for a car. Locked in. We need, um, something to go down and open the door.
Didn't see. Well, in the middle of the meeting, no disrespect, shouldn't be locked there anyway. Why have we just improved it? I think they should come back and wish me some. I know, I'm always the only one who's. Can you allow them?
Yeah, of course.
So I I think so far, this has been being discussed through the General Partners in Finance Committee, uh, from memory, let me find the papers for it. It's, it's. H. Six H, six H, this is the one. I think it is. Yes, so, um. At one of the Five Market Town meetings that we've been having with Breckland, that's, um, the Five Market Town Chair, no, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Clarks. Um, Swaffham reported that they had recently installed, um, new equipment at their public toilets that actually then had a small fee to use the toilets, I think, twenty pence. Um, and they reported that since having that installation of the payment scheme, antisocial behaviour and vandalism had considerably dropped. Um, they did say to begin with, it, you know, didn't make them too popular. Um, but actually they'd overcome that and it was actually generating quite a nice income as well as the the social benefits. So, um, Sharon done some work speaking to the Park at Swaffham. Uh, and a bit of, um, I think you actually looked for quotes at the time as well to see and and ballpark figure of what it would likely be like the expense to install the installation. Um, which has come in around ballpark eight thousand pounds. A cost that obviously would be recovered over time with the income that it would generate for the payment. We have, and I think this has been a long time, I think for some time now, so most members will be aware, have over the years experienced some quite unpleasant things in our public toilets. I think it still arises on a weekly basis. Um, I don't envy our caretakers, um, to be honest. And I think if it can go somewhere, and we have, we had foundations as well, with one of the doors being quite literally ripped off its hinges. And so, I mean, personally, I I am in favour. Uh, I think if it's gonna make the facilities a a better quality facility for the community to use at a small fee. Um, then I think it's a good investment to make, which is why these, uh, quotes have come forward. The General Partners Finance Committee has pretty supported the principle as well. Sharon, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah.
In respect of the costs or a preference and quote?
Yeah, um, well, as you know, we, uh, the right hander, uh, is now, uh, needing a repair. The quote that I got to repair that was one thousand and fifty. Um, the first quote, which is cheaper, eight thousand three hundred and fifteen from Healthmatic, it's just gonna put the device on to the door, it's not gonna replace the doors. For the extra, um, both doors are pretty old, I mean, they are pretty worn. And one has just recently gone because the bolt was worn down and sure. It isn't going to be too long before the other one goes as well. I would like to say that even though that's a more expensive quote, if you're gonna get two doors that are replacing it along with the device, it will then be connected up still to the timing system. And I think that would be much better than to have the old quote, then have to repair the door before you get that done. Takes that to nine thousand five hundred, say. Then you'd, then if the other door goes, you've still got to repair it anyway. If they're coming and they're gonna put a new door on, I think that you might as well get that done at the same time.
An investment. Councillor S Taylor.
Is it one new door or two new doors?
That will be two doors because we're gonna have them both done, so two new doors, yeah.
I think Sharon's right. But, yeah.
And we're gonna end up with the other one, so.
Yeah.
And also, in addition to some of the other issues we do face, regularly, I think there's complaints that they're either locked or that people struggle to unlock. And that basically locking mechanisms that we currently have and the handles that we currently have are not very user friendly. I'll come to councillor D'Souza first and then councillor Waits.
Can the machines, um, actually be damaged themselves? So we're talking about a door being damaged, can the machines, are that possibly damaged?
If they're damaged and it's quite costly, then we will claim on our insurance, so, yeah, that would be covered.
I think that's.
And they would be under warranty as well.
Just something in the back of my mind, being radar key or accessible, um, say on you.
Yeah, and.
On there now, that you retain.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, tick.
Good.
Okay, uh, in that case, can I please have a?
Sorry, I've got some kind of waiting on my head. So, the toilets are currently accessible, what, nine to four, something like?
Councillor Fraser.
And on to six. Nine to six. Does this mean that they're only accessible twenty four seven? If, I, oh, well, absolutely. Yeah, so that's, that is a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what are we looking to charge?
That's what I was thinking, too.
What are we looking to?
What would we be looking to charge?
Oh, I was thinking twenty pence. Because that's what Swaffham would do, yeah. You don't want to overcharge, you get a bit of fuel.
It's a door that's signed, it'll be a long time to set, it's still going to be concerned as long as we have a, what's it?
Oh, I would say, um, and I I only know this, this from conversations with councillor Fraser, that actually the public toilets that we have are very, very well used. So, how many toilet bowls do you go for a day?
Six.
Six. Six toilet bowls a day. That's a, that's a lot of use, I think, for something.
Wow.
Yeah, wow, let's, yeah, let's hope that it's mo- mostly, the most part being used as it should. So I think if you think about each time someone's going in there, if you're getting twenty pence each time over the course of a day or a week or a month, I think that will soon add up.
I might just say, well, someone's using their handbag up the toilet bowl, so they don't have to purchase them themselves. Which is, which I'd imagine twenty pence would be more cost effective for us anyway. Because that probably won't last long.
Well, perhaps. Councillor Dale.
How it was, they'll be in the cash as well as money. How would you see it if it's broken to get the cash?
Um, well, I would imagine they'd be pretty secure, they'd be metal, wouldn't they? I think it would be quite hard, otherwise they wouldn't be in business, would they?
And presumably would have a key to empty, so they could actually be empty.
We would be empty, yeah.
Bring it around to the end of town. We could even have signage to say no cash.
No cash.
Overnight or something, or we'd be empty at this time of the day.
Yeah.
Um, councillor D'Souza.
Uh, it's a little bit. What about our local residents, the ones that use it a lot, the ones that regular ladies who's on, we need to use the toilet, um, have it charged, I just think there's a little bit. What's the public perception going to be, start charging for a facility that has been free?
I think you'd already made a decision to go forward with that, so this is just, uh, you've got, if you.
Yeah, I I, yeah.
That decision has already been made.
At GPNF.
So this is just to, because we've decided to go forward with it, these are now to decide what type of security system, you know, um, coin operate system you want. So you'd have to get, um, a reverse, um, decision to rescind that decision if you wanted to go down that road.
But the alternative is, if we do get any backlash, at least you can blame the GPNF committee and say you weren't part of it. Is there any further questions on that? No.
Yeah. Again, the 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 whole premise of this was because of the damage, wasn't it? So. No, no?
Well, in part.
No, this was all discussed for the damage.
Right, it's a continuous, not the damage to the doors, yeah, the damage.
Oh, yeah, not, yeah, not.
There is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And social ASB.
That, no, that's my way, that's what I mean, so, yeah. Which you're saying is happening every day.
All councillors.
Pretty bad. No, no, but it's regular. During the course of a week, it's regular. Is this gonna stop?
Um, well, going by what Swaffham told me, the Swaffham clerk said that, um, it's, it, I think I reported that when you made this decision. And they've said that it's practically eradicated any antisocial behaviour. It literally was, she couldn't have said enough about it, it was very successful. Even though it's twenty pence, nobody who's got anything in mind probably wants to spend twenty pence, but for some reason it does work. And, um, she has said that they are, even after a year, they almost have broken even already.
Councillor Fraser.
Yeah.
It's been a penny, it's twenty pence.
So how many?
Stop you tomorrow.
Councillor Ashby, any further questions?
No, I'm just conscious that, um, with regards to what councillor D'Souza said, we need to be really debating it because potentially we are.
Do you, do you feel like twenty pence is too much? Do you feel like ten pence maybe would be more?
No, I, no, it's the, it's the perception and it's the principle of the matter as opposed to whether it's ten or twenty pence. That's, that's what you've got to get across. I'm not against it, but, you know, that's what you've got to get across.
I'm working my way back, so. Councillor West.
Yeah, there there is an issue with perception, but I think if people see a nice clean perceptible facility, then that perception will change.
I agree, hand down, hand down.
So on that note, I always like to be the one that takes the difficult decisions. I propose that we move ahead with the thirteen thousand, um, eight.
Twelve one seven nine.
Seven five quote or quote.
Four hundred and nine.
Doors in charge twenty pence.
Yeah.
And that's seconded by councillor Wingfield and sheriff hands, please. And that is carried.
Uh, majority.
Yeah.
Are you voting against or are you staying?
Well, I'm saying, yeah.
And then I'm staying.
Thank you, Dom. Um. Next, I just found my gender, so I might have this now, Karen.
Okay.
A bit full of. Uh, next we have item seven I to approve the firming of forty nine thousand from Tarmac EMR to Vono building repair EMR. This pass of forty nine thousand, so this has already been earmarked for servicing, which has not been spent in that location. The line marking, however, we are still awaiting the quotation. So on discussion with Sharon today, we did feel that it might be more appropriate to round that down to forty so that someone stood safeguarded and set aside for the line marking as and when the vote comes forward for that, which should we in the next couple of weeks? Councillor S Taylor.
I propose that we wrap up that with the recommendation that it's dropped. Nine thousand.
Yeah.
Do I have a second please? Councillor Fraser and a share of hands.
We know.
Thank you very much. Well, that will help when we, uh, get down to item eleven, so thank you. Uh, next we have item seven J to ratify expenditure approved for relocation of electrical switch unit at the Vono building for three hundred and sixty three pound thirty five. Uh, so the light switches for the facility for the upstairs function rooms were actually behind the bar. So when you come up the stairs, like you would think that they'd be there ready for you, you'd have to navigate across the room and behind the bar before you'd get to the light switches. And obviously, as we've recently, like, contracted the bar out, um, to Atterborough Football Club, it didn't seem appropriate that they were behind the bar because anyhow, they needed into access to the lights, would need access to the bar everywhere. Um, so that was the reason for that. Can I please have? Um, so that was the reason for that. Can I please have a proposer and secondar, uh, to ratify that payment? I've got councillor Fraser seconded by councillor Bircham and a share of hands, please. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have seven K to ratify the emergency filling of two birch trees at Deco Common at six hundred and fifty pounds for acceptance and approval. I think that's pretty self explanatory. I've got councillor Westbead proposing, seconded by councillor Dale and a share of hands, please. That is also unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have item eight, which is the budget and precept advice for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Sharon, would you like to talk us through this?
Um, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I will show part of my clerk's report because I had sort of put a lot in there. So I was sort of jumping ahead a bit on part of that report. Um, so the draft budget now includes a three year forecast, which is always recommended, um, in your financial, um, sort of like regulations. The draft figures for twenty twenty five, twenty six include an increase of five point seven five percent. Um, obviously going to year two, because obviously this is the start of a three year process, um, includes an increase of one point five three percent. And year three includes an increase of one point four four percent, which then gives a scope, just in case there are any other projects that come forward. Um, the tax base base for the new year is for four thousand two hundred and eleven, um, or round that up to four thousand two hundred and twelve. The proposed increase, um, is thirty eight thousand five hundred and one, um, which amounts to nine pounds fourteen uh, per council taxpayer per annum. The four major additions to the budget are youth. Bande, yes. Um, the, the four major additions to the budget are youth provision, revenue costs, splash pad provision, um, increased grant pot of six, I'll put sixty thousand there, uh, that, that is for the grants and the outdoor cinema, um, is six thousand. To balance the budget, it has been necessary to slightly decrease some smaller categories, but just bearing in mind what we spent last year. I've tried to be quite selective on that one. Um, there will also be a drawing on some of the earmarked reserves during the course of the year as projects come to fruition. Obviously, one of them is happening today. The car park improvements have just begun today. Um, and the play areas at Lowman Road, uh, we've got an amount of forty nine thousand. Um, we've still got to raise an extra, um, well, um, uh, it, the original scheme was a hundred and nine thousand, but unfortunately, we didn't get any funding from the National Lottery. So I've got to find funding for that full amount. But I have got also some information back from the, uh, winning company Hags, uh, to take that down to sixty seven thousand. Um, because, you know, that would probably be easier to attract funding. So I've got a funding application that I can, um, apply for. Um, I was going to try and get that done today, but it's been really busy, what with the construction. So I'll try and get that on the go tomorrow. And that will go to the Rural England Prosperity Fund. Um, the splash pad will partly be funded by the toilets earmarked reserve, um, it'll be a hundred and ten thousand approximately, which the council has, um, said that they would fund. Um, the remainder of that fund, um, will fund the coin card that you have actually just approv- uh, approved. Um, the town hall project, um, will use most of its forty thousand once completed. Um, the bus stops, section one O six will partly be used to contribute to the parish partnerships project, which I've got to get in by the fifth of December, um, for bus stops on Norwich Road, London Road and Harford Road. Um, the, we have actually, because of all this and what we've done with the precept, um, we still have, um, our untouched reserves, which are vastly reduced from when I first joined the council, um, whi- which was, I think, about six hundred and thirty one thousand. We've got the general reserves down to two hundred and twenty seven thousand seven hundred and fifty six. Um, in this year's current budget, um, we haven't spent the contingent contingency figure of twelve thousand five hundred. So with all this accounted for, the proposal is to request an amount of seven hundred and seven thousand five hundred and fifty two for the new budget year, up, uh, thirty eight thousand five hundred and one, which as I said before, was five point seven five percent. Last year's figure was six hundred and sixty nine thousand fifty one pounds.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Uh, councillor S Taylor?
We often do the nice things about doing and making the difficult decisions. And I know, up in anything is a difficult decision. But historically, all our residents mount at relaxing the structure. It doesn't get what it deserves. With bullins, major projects, our bag, it brings things to everybody. I know it's an awful thing. It's horrible to have to see things go up, but to do the nice things, you have to have the money to do them.
Any further comments or questions? Uh, the other question I had was, um, in respect of, um, the events. Um, obviously we helped recently set up an events working group.
Yeah.
Do you think that's sufficient? I think it's, personally, I thought it was a little bit tight.
Um, yes, but, um, i- if we outlay, what I'm, I'm just planning there is an in and out really. If we plan to spend a thousand, we hope to get a thousand back, so we outlay. And I don't think, from looking at what events we've got planned in so far, um, we, we won't actually spend a thousand pounds even setting up the event. So that thousand pounds that I'm projecting for the income is actually really conservative because it could be a lot more than that.
Okay.
So, um, I, I think it's okay, yeah.
Thank you. As long as, I just had to ask.
Yeah, that's fine.
In that case, uh, can I please have a proposer and seconder to accept the budget as presented? Uh, that's councillor Wingfield, seconded by councillor Bircham and a share of hands, please. That is unanimous.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Uh, next we have item nine, which is the advance policy, which, um, Sharon has, uh, redrafted in respect of the, um, shop on the bar. So this is a standalone separate policy to the one, obviously, that we have, uh, at present for community groups and organisations. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the policy as it was presented? No. Um, the only query I had, Sharon, and I might have missed it, apologies if I have, is, um, I didn't see anything in there restricting the application period to the three month period, which we had previously discussed, just having a window of opportunity rather than welcoming the bids year round. Um, and I just wondered if we could make one amendment to, to include, um. Yeah. So, so that it was, um, so there was like a.
Three month.
Three month application period.
Yeah. To add. Okay, yeah.
So like small windows of like, to, for people to apply.
Oh, right.
So like a three month period where people could apply, then it could close for three months, then it could.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That is what the intention was, was.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I.
I'm looking around. So, but, but with that amendment, I'm, I'm quite happy with it. Anyone else have any comments, questions, like? Um, do we have a proposer for its acceptance? Councillor Ashby and a second, please. Councillor Bircham and a share of hands, please.
Yeah.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Hmm.
Next we have item ten, which is Abra Town Football Club large grant request. Um, following the application, um, there was an inspection of the T hut, which the application is to refurbish. And it was felt that if it was moved, relocated, there was a good chance that it would not withstand, um, that the move, because the bottom of it is actually wood and obviously is quite old and hasn't been moved for a considerable time. Um, so there may have to be an alternative solution found, whether it's a new one or, um, or, well, we, we need to discuss with the pub basically to, to see how they'd like to progress, uh, with this. So for the time being, we're going to further sign. Okay, thank you. Uh, next is item eleven, which is the, uh, football club to consider quotes for. Uh, we'll take the first one, replacement windows.
Yeah, okay. So, um, we had two quotes in, um. The, um, I mean, I, I, that actually, eleven thousand is actually, uh, includes the VAT. So that was actually nine thousand. So if you then add that, I was going by pre VAT, because obviously we can claim the VAT back. So the value of that, as opposed to, um, this one, uh, the Eastern, was still vastly cheaper. So, um, uh, I think, uh, on that, I mean, both companies are really good companies and you have some knowledge of.
Yeah, well, just for absolute transparency, um, the director of Shaw Home Improvements was previously, uh, a long time ago, a colleague of mine. So, um, I, I know him quite well and I think would vouch for the quality of his work and services. And Eastern Windows, I don't know, but I do know Sharon also did seek a third quote, um, but unsuccessful.
Yeah, that's right. That, that company didn't respond. So I have sought three quotes and I have got proof, if you want to see it all, I've got, so, yeah. So, um, yeah, I, I was going to suggest that we go with obviously the cheapest because, you know, the two companies are quality companies and so we'll go for the cheapest.
Yeah. Do I have a proposer, please? Councillor Bircham, seconded by councillor S Taylor and a share of hands, please.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. And then next.
So, do you have knowledge of this?
Absolutely.
When is that likely to be made?
So that work can be completed by the end of January.
Yeah.
So, flip turn around, too. Um, next we have the roof repair, uh, which is item, uh, eleven B, I suppose. Um, Sharon, would you like to?
Yes, um, I have actually sought probably four quotes, um, and, sorry, um, the other two quotes were the larger quotes that were given, uh, to replace tiles. So I was trying to seek three further quotes to see, um, you know, for, for myself. I only managed to get one quote back because the other two companies, after nagging them, repeatedly contacting them, um, they said that they were going to attend and do a, uh, drone on the roof and everything and they never materialised. So I couldn't have tried any harder to get them to come along. Um, but surprisingly, uh, the two largest quotes were, uh, twenty five thousand. That was to replace the tiles, the batons, the felting. Now, when we had this, uh, company that I've dealt with, they've actually said that there's no need to do that. They fit, in their opinion, you can do, um, the, the, the repairs to the slate, the, the, uh, I think they're slate, aren't they? Slate tiles. So that actually came to two thousand five hundred and thirty pounds. Um, if there are any other slates while they're doing the job, each, uh, further slates, there could be a, a figure extra, um, three hundred pounds plus VAT, uh, or, um, repre- prepares to rainwater goods. So I think he is going to also in that, uh, repair the gutter. There's two areas of guttering that he's going to do as well for us because you can clearly see that the rainwater has just dripped down where they're not joining. So they've actually, uh, been dripping for so long, goodness knows how long. So, so actually, um, that's a vast difference. That's ten times as, as, as less. So, um, and that this is a, a, a very renowned company, I think. Um, Anne can vouch for that because you've got a relative who has worked for them.
He could, um, this is.
And, uh, so Anne has, uh, knowledge of the company and they are a good company, so.
Does anyone have any comments? Councillor S Taylor?
Best get down.
Yes. Councillor Frazel?
I agree, but I've just noticed on here, they're talking about, uh, dozen of things like, oh, that's best, that's already that, or the, tell we clear on those. And that we're doing that.
I don't think he could, he didn't spot any, um, while he was doing his, um, inspection. So, yeah. If there is a problem, I'll have to report back, obviously.
Councillor S Taylor?
Um, if, if there was bad, the world line officer would have told us, because he's bang on it.
Oh, you wouldn't.
But, um, we let's commence the work. If he finds anything, he'll have to stop anybody because that's a legal obligation. So I propose that we go with.
Quote. Aspect, yes.
Seconded by councillor Dowell. Sorry, councillor, she just beat to it. A share of hands, please.
Yeah.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Um. The final bullet point here, the disabled toilet conversion. I think there was alternate quotes that have been sought that haven't come in yet. So I was just wondering if we could defer that this evening.
Yeah.
Um, and, and refer that back to GPNF in two weeks' time. Just give them a little bit longer to get their quotes in. Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Uh, then we have item twelve, which is councillors' reports, town district and county councillors to give their three to four on relevant information. Does anyone have any reports about, so, councillor Liel Taylor?
Yeah, um, I, I think it's happened that, um, a couple of times since I've been a councillor, uh, talking about the sheds in Wyndham. Um, so then I was tasked by the council if, if councillors can recall to, uh, contact the shed in Wyndham just to, uh, understand a bit about their organisation and what they, what they do. Um, and I, I had a really, really positive response. Um, uh, because I contacted the trustees of the sheds, the management committee and some of the volunteers as well. And they kindly gave me the opportunity to go and visit the shed. Um, and give a capacity, I couldn't invite everybody at the council, I hope you, I hope that's okay, but I, I invited, um, councillor Taylor, team, uh, councillor Ashby and our beloved clerk, me to go to, um, the shed window, which we did last Friday at nine o'clock. Um. Suffice to say, it was fascinating and quite inspiring. Visit, I'm, I'm sure, uh, the, the four of us, all the three, that you can testify to that. So we had a look at the location. We had, we had a really, really good, um, talk by one of the trustees, one of the fans of the shed, around the history and the objectives and the principles and the values, values of the shed. Um, we, we had a look around with volunteers at the, at the, uh, the facilities. But I think what was most important was, and I'm sure the people that joined me would agree, was just the stories of, of people who were using that facility. It was really, really inspiring. Um, so, yes, we do have other, um, priorities as a council, youth provision. Yeah, and lots, lots of other projects which, you know, are really impressive and we've done really, really well. Um, so I, I guess my proposal for the council is that, uh, we have two options. We either, um, forge ahead and think about the shed in Appleborough, um, or in the interim that we use, we use their facilities, um. But, but given that we have other priorities, of course, as well, we may want to park it, but not, um, uh, forget about it. So it was just a report to say it was a, a very, very good and inspiring visit. Okay. Councillor Taylor, T and I had a chat just before the meeting and it was very, very inspiring. So we did do dividends, you know, the public partnership, our participation twice has asked us to, to explore that possibility. We've done it. Um, I, I, I think it's, it's a great opportunity, but given other priorities, we just need to plan it out. So we had two options. One, we plan it out and go for it, or in the interim, Appleborough residents, because it was offered, could use that facility.
Yeah. Thank you very much, councillor Wingfield. And thank you as well for making the arrangements for us to go over. I think I can speak for all of us at the top table when I say it was actually a very worthwhile visit. Um, it far exceeded my expectations of what it was going to be and I was, yeah, very impressed. So. Um, they did say that they currently have membership from Appleborough, so, uh, yeah, Appleborough residents will be very welcome there. Uh, until if and when, uh, we manage to sort something ourselves.
Hmm.
Any other reports from councillors?
You want to go first?
Hmm, don't mind. Yeah, go on.
Okay, I'll tell them. And a bit of a busy mark, but I'll just breeze through. Done some highways, throwing in it. It was horribly interesting. That was, that wasn't too bad. Had the honour to represent the district at our remembrance service. Also had the honour of representing the district at the LGIU awards, which was an honour because it was a title, it's a, that's an award. So that was a really nice one to be able to be there and be with her for that, even though she didn't win, but she's a winner, I believe, anyway. Attended some of the car park engagements and I know that's an unpopular topic. Attended some of the car park engagements, and I know that's an unpopular topic, but actually it was quite interesting to hear what residents had to say. Had a couple of meetings with officers about projects that we'd like to deliver within the community. One of those would like to start in January, and councillor T Taylor and myself have the ace with the club, because we would like to use the town hall facilities to possibly start running a community cafe on a Sunday, starting the first Sunday in January. If everyone welcomes that idea, we would be looking for volunteers, but none of you have to feel that you you need to volunteer, but it would be lovely. And basically, we'd like to run this really cafe on the basis that it's come along, have a chat, have something to eat in a warm space, make new friends, maybe play a few games and donate what you can for what it is that you take. So tea and coffee would be available, squash, juice, water and a warm meal. So hopefully, with everyone's support, we can start that in January, which is an exciting new project and hopefully worthwhile over the town. And some licensing updates, which has been good. And that's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, well, then I'll finish off. Um, so in addition to obviously what's already been raised, um, I have attended a few things, either uh civically as chair and like, for instance, the uh fashion show that I must have team done a few weeks back, which was another uh fantastic uh event. Uh, councillors Fraser and Bertram also got brought into uh walking the catwalk. And so a little bit of team building there as well, but it was very good night. Um, and that one was in aid of Dogs Trust. Um, as councillor Estella referenced, lots of car park engagements. There was one of that was uh and just the the town council members and that councillor Dell and councillor Bertram also attended alongside himself and councillor S Taylor. Um, and I do think that that was a really good opportunity to um let people that, you know, know their community so well um, voice their thoughts, feelings and such like. Uh, obviously, as you've already been said, the council awards, um, which, I mean, I'm biased, but I was pretty pleased to be there. Um, and I I don't think there's really a great deal more to be to be said than that, really. But I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their support and their well wishes and any of us. So, thank you. Uh, next, moving on, uh, we have item thirteen, which is the clerk support. Over to you, Sharon.
Um, yeah, the uh town hall improvements are still underway. Um, we were supposed to have the doorway to the kitchen um started today, but the carpenter from the company got delayed, so they're starting tomorrow. Um, the, hoping that the kitchen refurbishment should be done in early January. I'm not sure about that. Obviously, the kitchen has to be ordered, and I I need to check whether that has been done. But I'm not sure, because I think I'm told that the measurements uh need to be done after the doorway is actually in, because then they will know exactly the measurements of the cupboards that they then need to um sort like put through. So I can understand that. Um, and also on the other, the other thing that's on the agenda is um the application about the um air source heat pump. So I won't say too much about that. Um, town council maintenance, um, we allocated the cemetery keeper, so he's the sole person now responsible for uh standards in the cemetery. I'm really pleased to report that he has been busy making improvements already uh to the garden of remembrance by planting new hor- laurel hedges. Um, and he has received um numerous compliments already from visitors, so that's really, really nice to hear. Um, the first farmers' market took place in November. Um, not all the stalls were booked, but um the turnout was really good, considering it's our first one. And we feel absolutely sure that the next one, which I think is on the seventh, will um build on that, and that will be even better. Um, we also, preparations are well underway for the Christmas market on the fourteenth of December. We've got, uh, when I wrote the report, we have thirty stalls booked in for inside and outside uh the town hall, which is great. Uh, we have booked um the outdoor cinema. We may well have to change the date. Um, because we are a bit concerned that although last year we did the same day as Pride, um, when you look back on the attendance, because of Pride, the attendance wasn't so good. So we may well adjust that so that we uh do the, maybe later in August. Um, I haven't told Daniel this yet, but this was something that we thought about. And I have uh sort of like inquired with the company whether that would be possible. And they said, just give them some dates and they will get back to us to tell us what's available. But in order for the outdoor cinema to be successful, it is, you you know, it's probably better to have the events spread out so that each event can succeed in its own way. So, um, then uh the Atver Town Football Club building, um, we obviously have reported already and you've seen on the quotes, so I won't bore you with that. Um, but we are in the process of like, um, we've got the budget for it. We have, um, we have now started on getting quotes and everything. So uh Taylor and myself have taken pictures of the roadway that's being done. We'd like to sort of report on that as we go through that. So we're doing, taking before pictures and would like to and even um the contractor is going to take pictures as well for us as he goes through the next two weeks. So it would be nice to see when the line marking is done, what it looked like before and what it's going to look like afterwards. Um, I won't tell you about the public toilets, because um that item has been decided. Um, the youth provision, we held an event on the twenty fourth of November. That was quite well attended. Uh, we also conducted two further surveys, one to find a name for the provision and to ascertain what our youth actually do want from the facility of those that we spoke to on that afternoon. Um, I haven't managed to analyse them yet, because I haven't had time, but I will get that that information to you. Um, and we're just still awaiting. I've actually had contact with the solicitors today. We're still awaiting the lease to be presented to our solicitors, solicitors by the landlord solicitors. And I obviously I've gone through the budget, so that's the end of the report.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Sharon? No? Well, then we will move on. Thank you very much. Um, and the report also is available on the town council's website for members of the public. Uh, item fourteen, to consider the draft lease for the Signal Box Building. Sharon, am I right to say that this item needs to be deferred? We've not yet received it.
Yeah.
Uh, so that will be deferred. Um, hopefully that will wait till January. If not, if it is time sensitive, we may have to have it. The E D M for business. Uh, next we have item fifteen, to ratify the funding application submission for the air source heat pump. That is a mouthful, Sharon. Uh, cost to the council, uh, fourteen thousand, four hundred if successful. So that is just to clarify, that should our bid be successful, the maximum contribution that we would need to make is fourteen thousand, four hundred pounds. Councillor S Taylor? Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Bertram and a show of hands, please.
Yes.
Uh, majority. Carried one extension. Thank you. Uh, next we have item sixteen, which is uh Christmas get together and Christmas and New Year closing. Sharon, would you like to lead on this?
Um, yeah, I've, um, just to say that, um, I think it's customary every year for the office to um close down. So from that, we would notify the um s- uh sort of like undertakers. Um, the staff would take annual leave in order to have that time off. Um, so it worked okay last year, but this year we will have um one member of staff in who will be manning the phones voluntarily. So, um, so really, that that should be covered.
And you just want to say, rather than have you in, it's Christmas. Can you not just call diver?
Um.
I've got my table left. I've used all my. You've got nothing, can you go?
This is this, yeah, this is this is to use up the in lieu, isn't it?
Some hours, but I keep that for my current duties, so I've got.
So what's the proposal? You do what? On what day?
Uh, every three days.
Not Christmas Day.
Never. You're just on the working days.
What day?
I just propose then that if Anne is working, that she's allowed to work remotely from home. As it is Christmas, and she's still doing the hours, can we not call diver and her take her laptop home and her work from home?
I don't mind working. I don't mind.
I think we leave that to Anne to decide then, yeah.
Councillor Bertram.
Suppose if she chooses, she can.
Yeah, it's up to Anne, yeah.
Sorry, I I I go councillor Bertram first, sorry. Oh, do not. Councillor Waits.
Shouldn't be anybody in the building on their own. If you've got problems.
But sometimes you have to.
Councillor Sayre, they get twitchy about that.
Councillor Ashby?
To me, this is a
Anne's decision.
This is a clerk's decision. This is how you run the office.
Yeah.
So so should we, should we leave it to Anne and and Sharon to decide between themselves and work arrangements?
I can do ten four two when we're open to the public, and then a- after that, I can work from home. I'll do it that way.
Whatever you would like to do, but if you'd like to do it all from home, I think we would all be supportive of that.
Yes.
Don't feel obliged to come into the office unless you want to. But it's still working, it's just from home. Yeah? Okay. We don't need a motion at that, do we?
No, no, it's just a sort of note.
And the get together?
Um, yes, and um and and the councillors have been invited by the staff to to come for a buffet um, and um drinks at their expense. So, no, no taxpayers paying for that, so. Um, we 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 did it last year, but uh on a smaller scale, but we'd like to do a lovely buffet this year, so.
Thank you very much. No, it was very kind of me. Um, does anyone have any comments? No? Just, oh, thanks. Um, next we have item seventeen, which is public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? No. No? Okay.
Can I just chat as a member of the public? Councillor Paul, I'll maybe give you one or two. But I would just like to say that our youth club is storming ahead, as as the club mentioned. We're on the brink of getting our keys and stuff. Um, if there are any local tradespeople watching our meeting at home in the warm, we are looking for tradespeople to volunteer to come in and help us get up and running and make it all spangly and happy for our children. So if there's anyone at home that thinks, oh, yeah, I've got some spare money, please volunteer.
Thank you.
And we are going to be doing a Facebook page on that as well, so, yeah.
Fabulous. Uh, items for the next agenda, we'll leave that to be confirmed, uh, I think, Sharon. And with that, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you so much for coming, everybody.